Good evening and welcome. I am Janelle Hudson, Director of NYCHA's Resident Engagement Department, and I am the moderator for this evening for the New York City Housing Authority's Significant Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2017 Annual Plan and Draft Fiscal Year 2017 Capital Plan Public Hearing. We have sign language interpreters for the hearing and period, and Spanish, Russian, and Chinese translators for those that need it. Will the interpreters please come to the microphone and identify themselves?
Buenas tardes, bienvenidos a la audiencia pública de NYCHA. Tenemos servicios de interpretación en español disponibles. Tenemos los equipos. Los que necesiten por favor traducción en español pueden dirigirse a nuestra mesa que está al inicio a la entrada del auditorio. Gracias.
我们今晚会为大家提供国语的同声翻译。
Doble vi chen, if you need to translate this presentation in Russian, please come to the translator booth and receive the transcript. Thank you.
Bienvenido todo el mundo a la reunión de la Audiencia de NYCHA que ha sido celebrada a mediodía. Hoy estamos hablando para el país en el que disponemos de servicios que necesitemos.
Thank you all for taking the time to attend. Everyone is busy and you've made this a priority. We appreciate that so many of you are here tonight expressing an interest in NYCHA. In accordance with Section 5A of the United States Housing Act of 1937 as amended, housing authorities are required to develop, with review and input from residents and the general public, an annual plan that outlines its priorities for the upcoming year. Federal law allows a public housing authority to modify or amend its annual PHA plan or plan. Significant amendments to the plan are subject to the same requirements as the original plan. On March 17th, 2017, NYCHA published a significant amendment to the Fiscal Year 2017 Annual PHA Plan. NYCHA is amending its annual agency plan for fiscal year 2017 because it was a successful applicant in the Rental Assistance Demonstration for selected developments in the Bronx and Brooklyn. As a result, NYCHA will be converting public housing subsidies to project-based vouchers at these developments under HUD guidelines. The amendment includes the disposition of parcels of land at Harborview Terrace, Marcella Air Rights, Sumner Houses, and Twin Parks West for the development of new 100% affordable housing. NYCHA has also released its draft fiscal year 2017 capital plan and five-year action plan for public review and comments. The review period, which began on March 17th, 2017, encourages our residents and advocates to provide written comments on the significant amendment to the Fiscal Year 2017 Annual Plan and the Draft Fiscal Year 2017 Capital Plan until May 5th, 2017. These comments will be taken via fax and email through the mail and collected at this public hearing. The significant amendment was made available on March 17th for public inspection at NYCHA's principal office at 250 Broadway, on NYCHA's website, at each local property management office, at all community operations, management, and lease housing borough offices, and at four designated community senior centers. The amendment and capital plan were also sent to all Resident Engagement Board delegates and to each Resident Association president. The purpose of this hearing is to obtain the views, comments, and recommendations of the public on the significant amendment to the Fiscal Year 2017 Annual Plan and the Draft Fiscal Year 2017 Capital Plan. The amendment and the capital plan are not final and will be modified before they are submitted to HUD. Please understand however, that this evening is not intended as a forum for verbal exchange. NYCHA representatives will not engage in any discussions with the speakers, nor will they respond to questions. They are present to hear what you have to say about the significant amendment and the capital plan. This public hearing is being livestreamed over the internet and will be available to view on NYCHA's website. Joining us tonight, we have the NYCHA board: Shola Olatoye, Chair and Chief Executive Officer; Michael Kelly, General Manager; Jacqueline Orojo, Member; Victor E. Gonzalez, Member; Jacqueline Young, Member. Before we begin, I would like to introduce NYCHA's Chair and Chief Executive Officer, Shola Olatoye, who will share with us a brief update on the amendment and next-generation NYCHA initiatives.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Janelle, for your stewardship of this evening's event. I want to thank the General Manager and my fellow board members for being here, and I want to thank all of you for taking time out of your busy schedules to come and listen and share your ideas and input on the Significant Amendment and Annual Plan. One thing that we have tried to do in these meetings, also provide information, an opportunity to speak directly to you about initiatives that are happening throughout the authority. So I want to spend just a few minutes, because I know people want to speak, a few minutes providing some information and updates on the work that we're doing. It is meant to be a snapshot. There are lots of things that are happening that many of you are engaged in, and I want to thank you for your resident leadership on those issues, but we also just want to give you an update on where we are. So, starting with the fact that, you know, you all know this, but many people who maybe are watching at home, you know, NYCHA is the country's largest housing authority. One in 14 New Yorkers rely on us for some form of home. If we were a city, we'd be as big as the city of Miami. Our residents are as diverse as New York. We have, you know, 110,000 people who are under the age of 18 and more than 77,000 residents who are over the age of 62 and even older. Our average income, just updated, is about $25,000 per family, and more than a quarter of our residents work. So again, really, data should inform what people think about who lives in public housing. When we look at where our residents are employed, the top three employers are actually public systems: the New York City Department of Education, the NYPD, and NYCHA itself. So literally, the people who power this city are the people who live in our buildings. One of the things that we have really sought to communicate is the impact that not only our residents, but our investment in our buildings have on communities, neighborhoods, and the city. Every facet of what this administration cares about is connected to and has an impact at NYCHA. Whether that be technology, and we'll talk a little bit about our efforts in that front, safety, health, etc. But then there's the reality of where we find ourselves. We have lost about, almost in total, $3 billion in federal funding. As you know, our primary source of funding is the federal government, and to lose $3 billion in operating, which pays for the men and women who work at our developments, who are on the frontline, who help administer our programs, or on the capital side, the money that actually goes into fixing the bricks and mortar, to lose $3 billion in total in any business would have a significant impact, and this is just since 2001. The reality is, this impact over the course of really our history has led us to a $17 billion capital need, or meaning we need $17 billion today, that's billion with a B, to bring every one of our 176,000 units up to a good state of working repair. It's a huge challenge that we and my colleagues here at the table and in and around the room are working on with your help. We've done a number of things as part of Next Generation NYCHA to improve the quality of life for our residents, which is why we do this work. Whether that is really focused on being a better landlord, which is our core focus in business, improving on customer service. So the time that it takes for work to get done, and this is an average, has been reduced from almost 10 days back in 2015 to a look to just over five days. And in some of our other parts of our portfolio, we're even outperforming that. So this is an average. We absolutely have more work to do, but this really shows the amount of focus and attention and investment that we have done with the men and women at the authority to deliver better services. One way that we've done that is by just joining the 21st century, using technology. You all probably have phones. None of our staff had phones. So they're carrying around thousands of pieces of paper, work orders that get lost, that don't get inputted into the system, that get closed, without all of those challenges that I'm sure many of you have experienced. Now, our employees, our frontline employees, have handhelds that are allowing people to open and close work tickets, to allow residents to sign off on the work that's done, really creating a more efficient system and also creating an element of quality control. We've done a lot of work around trying to be a better, a more efficient landlord, around sustainability, and won't go into details with everything from really working to change light bulbs and making sure that light bulbs are more energy efficient, so that we can then reinvest the savings from those investments back into our buildings. This is something called an Energy Performance Contract that HUD allows us to essentially invest those savings in. So we're using every single tool at our disposal to invest in our buildings and try and be a better landlord. As I mentioned, $17 billion of needs, our capital budget that we receive from HUD clearly is not enough to support that. And so we've done a lot of work, really, at the leadership of Mayor de Blasio and this administration. He's invested more than $1 billion in new roofs, lighting, and other important capital or infrastructure items that actually go to preserving these buildings, dealing with issues of leaks and mold that we know so many residents have challenges with. We're putting that money to work, whether that is with new roofs or leveraging other funds to really bring light to a number of our developments. We've installed almost 5,000 new lights throughout our developments in addition, adding to our CCTV or closed-circuit cameras throughout our development. We have a lot more to do, but really utilizing the money that we do not receive from the federal government, utilizing that money that we're getting from the mayor and others to add these things to your homes, to your communities, has been a really important part of our work. One of the items that is part of the Significant Amendment is our work around development. Development for us is a tool to meet an end. It is a tool to address the affordable housing crisis that the city finds itself in. NYCHA itself has over 200,000 people on its waitlist. There's also the very real need of, we have to raise more money in order to protect and preserve New York City public housing. So we're doing a couple of different things. One is building more affordable housing with the city. We're doing this all across the city. We're also building housing that is 50% market, 50% affordable. We're doing this in neighborhoods where you don't see affordable housing being built, like on the Upper East Side, like in downtown Brooklyn. We're partnering with the city, we're partnering with nonprofit and for-profit developers, ultimately as a means to an end. We have to figure out how to raise the money that the federal government is not providing us to invest in our buildings and to protect your homes. We're also utilizing, again, tools that HUD has put out, like the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, which is a program that was started under the Obama administration that allows housing authorities to convert to Section 8, which is a more stable funding source, and invest those resources into the buildings and improve the quality of life for residents. We closed on our first transaction in December in Ocean Bay Bayside, Queens. 1,400 residents are going to see almost $400 million of new repairs, whether that's roofs, new bathrooms and kitchens, new lobbies, security, all of the things that go to make a safe, clean, and connected community. We're also, NYCHA, you may not know, we also have more than 2 million square feet of non-residential commercial space, whether this could be storefronts or community centers, old community centers that are now closed or shuttered because of the lack of resources. We're doing a lot to bring those spaces back online, both to raise revenue for the authority and to create services for our residents. A very important part tonight, being just one example of that, is engaging with residents in a new and different way. Yes, there are forums like this, but more importantly, Ms. Hudson and members of the Resident Engagement Group and many, many other parts of NYCHA are out in the community every day working on connecting residents to jobs, connecting residents to services, talking about and engaging on different initiatives that are happening at the authority. This is just one snapshot of the type of work that we're doing around connecting residents to service partners and actual job placements. We know that far too many of our residents are still disconnected from the employment industry or sector, really working to make sure that this is something that we are focused on, like a laser, not just Section 3, but Section 3 and beyond. So for those of you who may be living under a rock, we have a new presidential administration, and that has presented some serious challenges for public housing. We have already begun to experience the decrease in funding from the federal government. In February, HUD cut us by about $50 million. This is happening. This is a real life experience, and it will have direct impact on our residents. We're working very hard to fight against it, and many of you have been a part of rallies, etc. And we cannot let up the pressure, because, again, 1 in 14 New Yorkers rely on us for housing, so this is housing that must be protected and preserved. We've been doing a lot of coalition building here in New York and across the country, and it will continue in the face of future cuts, which we hope to avoid, but we know are coming. The subject of tonight's Significant Amendment, there are a couple of issues. We just want to provide a quick snapshot on what they are. One is HUD passed a, at the end of the Obama administration, adopted a smoke-free rule, essentially requiring all public housing authorities to implement smoke-free policies that prohibit the use of cigarettes and other prohibited tobacco products in certain areas. So that is one of the items that is up for discussion and your input this evening. And so we've done a ton of work to talk to residents about this, but we'll be interested in your opinions. The other, and obviously the science supports the importance of avoiding secondhand smoke, and we look forward to working with our partners at the Department of Health and others to make this a reality, but really with the residents as the lead. Our capital plan, again, this is the document that really sets a roadmap for how we invest the resources that we do receive from HUD into our buildings. And we've done a couple of things. This is sometimes seen as somewhat a pro forma or just a template document that we just have to do because we have to do it. But the reality is, we've had to change the way we do business in order to maximize every single dollar that we get from HUD into our buildings. So we are reallocating the money that we do get to really focus on the building envelope, the actual physical structure. So why haven't kitchens and bathrooms been replaced? Because we're replacing roofs and cornices, because we have to seal the buildings. If we cannot protect your apartment from water, it makes no difference if we actually go in and replace something in the interior. So we have to first protect the building envelopes. Second is looking at the interiors, so those areas where we can do building interiors. And then there's the systems, the pipes. Two-thirds of our buildings are 60 years old. I just see our EVP of Capital walking in, so I'm speaking your language. Two-thirds of our buildings are 60 years old or older, and the pipes are oftentimes 60 years old or older. So what does that mean for you? It means leaks. It means we fix the leak, another leak pops up in another part of the building. The reality is, the whole system needs to be replaced. But again, I'll remind you, $17 billion in capital needs and not enough money coming from HUD to address it. But what we're trying to do is prioritize those things that actually have an impact on the experience of the resident. And then lastly, we're providing a lot of grounds on this. I will say we're really working with our partners at the city and the nonprofit community to help us figure out how to do more of this with other people's money. The other item under the Significant Amendment is our affordable housing program. There's specific sites that we're talking about. There's been a very robust resident engagement effort at each of these sites. One of the differences about the work that we have sought to do is we start with the residents first. We talk about the need for, why we need to do it, but we also talk about what their needs are and with regard to how their daily experience is. And then the last item is additional sites for HUD's Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. Again, that program is a HUD program that allows housing authorities to essentially utilize money to invest in their buildings. We don't have enough money from the federal government. We have to use other sources to do that. So a very important program along that HUD is stopped behind and something that really represents the future for a lot of housing authorities. So with that, I want to thank you for your attention, and I look forward to your input and comments for the rest of the evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair. We hope that as many people as possible will have an opportunity to express their comments. So before we begin the actual hearing, let's go over the following ground rules to make this evening go through for all of us. If you wish to speak, first you must fill out a speaker slip. They are available in the entrance at the area table, on the table marked "Speaker Sign In." Please line up at each of the microphones in the aisle and wait for your turn to speak. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. On the stage, you will see a timer with three lights. When you begin to speak, the green light will be on and the timer will begin to count down. When the yellow light is lit, it means that you should start to conclude your remarks. When the red light is turned on, your three minutes to provide comments are open. A table has been set up outside so that written comments may also be submitted. Numbered speaker slips are non-transferable, and if you are not present or do not wish to speak when your name and number is called, you will forfeit the opportunity to speak. The hearing is being recorded and transcribed by a stenographer, so please speak only from the microphones in the aisles and identify yourself and your development or affiliation. Remember, we are here to comment on the Significant Amendment and the Capital Plan. Any personal comments on criticisms of or oral attacks on NYCHA personnel, resident representatives, and public attendees, or any demeaning, discriminatory, or ethnic slurs or vocal language will not be tolerated. I, as the moderator of this evening's meeting, reserve the right to immediately move on to the next speaker, online if comments are deemed inappropriate. The moderator on the stage is in charge of the public hearing. Please be considerate of your neighbors and follow the moderator's directions. We are here to consider issues that are of concern to everyone, not issues that concern only a single resident or individual. If you have an issue that concerns only you or your apartment, we have tables set up outside specifically for that purpose. Please fill out a resident response form at the table outside marked "Resident Complaints." The passing out of materials is not allowed. In the auditorium, however, a general information station is available outside where leaflets and flyers may be displayed. Resource tables have been set up outside with information so that at the end of the meeting, you can pick up information that may be of interest to you. We encourage you to learn more about our community programs, including Community Engagement and Partnerships, NYCHA Emergency Management, and Department of Real Estate Services. Copies of the executive summary for the Significant Amendment are available in English, Spanish, Chinese, and Russian for review purposes on the tables outside of the auditorium. So let's begin. Speaker number one is Lisa Kenner, followed by Joanne Brown.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Kenner, and I'm the president of Van Dyke. I didn't hear myself. I want to talk, ask about the smoke-free. If you can't smoke in your house, if you have to go outside, people still won't get secondhand smoke. So I think it's better to stay in your house and smoke than go outside and smoke. It's still going to rise up. So, do you, do, do, do? Did one thing, did not do the other. So I just think that you got to look over that again, because you talked about secondhand smoke goes up. So that means if you go outside, this smoke is going to go up too, unless you're going to put in some type of program that people go to to try to stop smoking before it kicks in. Oh, I still got time. But also, I was looking at about June on Commerce, and I want to say this. Could you bring another building to Van Dyke, taking both our parking lots? Really supposed to be taking one parking lot. But when you make that garbage, and it's going to be by the senior citizen building, take into consideration that the seniors live there, and they don't want to see a whole bunch of garbage. They want to make sure the fence is up. You know, if you put it by a church, and like the bishop said, you wouldn't put it out, St. Patrick Cathedral Church. You wouldn't put the garbage there. You know, you got to be considerate. You can't just keep stopping things in our neighborhood. We're human beings too. We all got our PhD. If people don't know what PhD means, they're public housing diploma. So, yeah, do it. I just want to say that, just take into consideration that we're human beings, and yes, we're raising the next generation, but we're also human beings.
Thank you, Ms. Kenner. Joanne Brown from Warren Street Houses, followed by Willie Mae Lewis from St. Nicholas Houses.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a tenant first, but I also have a whole, a whole lot of hats. But I'm coming here and I'm listening, and Shola, I appreciate what you're saying, but can you implement somewhere in your amendments for, okay, we have a lot of younger people, I'm going to say young men, that's coming home from jail. They're looking for work, but they're in the hardship of the ride hell. But you're saying that you need all these repairs or whatever. If they can do the work, could you implement somewhere in your bylaws or inside your amendments or higher for the case, maybe, where you can look, look to help them, look to be better on your way. I know they're wicked, they don't serve their time. So now they're trying to do, will they come out and then do something constructive with their lives and then make it better? So if we can just reach out and just help them as well. And also too, I understand that you're saying that you want to put more housing inside the developments, but also at the same time, all your private developers that you want to talk to, ask them, why couldn't they put in money to rebuild, to fix the inside of the old developments before you start putting money, building up the outside? No, put the money inside so that we can have our projects to be done, our, the rebuild, the need cabinets. Myself, I would appreciate your help. Personally, I would appreciate your assistance, so on out, to go to check for moldy and other people's development, like inside their apartments, because I know I had the mold in my apartment, and this is why we're struggling to breathe right now. So, but I'm saying, and then also at the same time, when you're doing these new developments, try to put in a lunch try to put in a laundry mat inside of those developments. I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna be mad at man because you're trying to put something in there, but make sure that the low-income people can even have a place to stay too at the same time. And they can go and do their laundry mats, you know, go and go do their laundry. And also too, if you can put in like a little store, you said that you tried to fundraise, right? You want to bring that money. These are good ideas here. Put in something rather for people to come to, so that they can feel that they belong. And also too, you got the people that live in the development, they would love to try to paint the hallway, paint someone else's apartment, and only just give them a chance. Open up to us and ask them what can they do? How can they help, help, help out each other, okay? And I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Lewis from St. Nicholas, followed by John Derrick Norville from Lincoln.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, General Manager, and the board members. I'm here today because first of all, I know we have a significant cut in housing. However, in 2015, Assemblyman Keith Wright, at that time, gave St. Nicholas Houses fifteen and a half million dollars. So this date, which we announced in 2017, there seemed to be something that you can't find the money. However, we also are part of the MAP program through the Mayor de Blasio. And I know that the mayor pledged one million dollars for roofing in a lot of the developments. What has happened in our development, the plumbing is past. The chair did speak about the plumbing in certain areas and that these buildings are sixty years plus. And that is happening in St. Nicholas. What I would like to see happen is that since we are part of the MAP program, that the roofing, that the mayor has proposed, the billion dollars, that we should be under that since we are part of the MAP program, and the fifteen and a half million dollars that was allocated to St. Nicholas Houses be put on the plumbing. The plumbing is very bad. As I speak right now, we're having hot water problems. No hot water at all, cold water. And this has been going on for the last three or four years. So I just would like to employ you to reexamine those quantities that was allocated to us from Albany, from the governors, of that fifteen and a half million dollars to be spent for plumbing. And that we go under, since we are part of the MAP program, that we also be part of the one billion dollars that is being spent for the public housing. Thank you, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. John Derrick Norville from Abraham Lincoln, followed by Walt McCoy from Grant.
Yes, we have the same problems at Lincoln. We have a problem with cold water. We have a problem with having heat, too much heat when it's hot, and no heat at all when it's cold. So we've been having that problem for a long time. And I want to talk to you about RAD, because I was one of several people, many people, who were born from Washington DC to Albany, back here about these issues. And we met with Ellison, whose model RAD idea became part of the appropriations that Obama signed. And RAD has made a lot of us mad. Because if you have this RAD thing, there is a clause that is in RAD that if any public housing development in the nation goes into default, it will be given to for-profit owners. And we have in New York, no record of those for-profit owners because it's under mayor or privilege, which started with Bloomberg and still there with de Blasio. We don't know who those for-profit owners are. At one point, people in Lincoln thought Donald Trump was one of the for-profit owners. But we have no record, no listing of that, no old records. And so if NITIA went into default and the for-profit owners get the land, get the buildings, they can tear all those buildings down and do what they want to do. You guys at NITIA, you keep the land, what happens to us? It's constructive eviction. We demand a bill of rights to protect our rights in public housing. We demand it here in New York, and we want it to be the model for public housing across the nation. So we have some protections in case there is default. We're not gonna be forced out while you keep the land, and Donald Trump and the boys and the rest of whoever take and tear down all the houses and that. And where do we go? Into the streets? No, that's not going to be. And that's all I've got to say.
Walt McCoy from Grant, and then Mary McGee from Fulton.
Yeah, welcome back to Grand Housing. I'm coming here because I came from Far Rockwood, Queens. I just live in Far Rockwood. I'm opening Grand Housing December the twenty-sixth. And I'm understanding I had such an aim, and I can't get such an aim. I'm a low-income resident.
If you will meet someone in the back who will be able to speak to you about your situation?
All right.
We try to assist, thank you. Mary McGee?
Good evening. My name is Mary McGee, I live in Fulton Houses. Last year, I went to the NITIA board meeting, and I talked about scaffolding up for a year at the development with no work being done. At that meeting, I was told that work was starting in September and finished by January. Here we are in May, two years later, and no work has been done, but yet scaffolding is still up. The amount of money you spent on scaffolding, you could have had the work done. The other thing is, you're talking about smoking in NITIA apartments. I understand it's a thing where it's health. But first, before you try to get smokers out, you gotta try to get the drug dealers out and the drug addicts out. And I think that's more important, and it has quality of life issues as well. And as for your proposal on affordable housing, you keep saying that NITIA's gonna build, you're taking away quality of life from the NITIA residents. But the buildings that you're building are not affordable to the residents who live in these apartments. So who is benefiting? Because when you take a parking lot from the development, what is that development getting back? Nothing. Why, why do you be told? Oh, NITIA. NITIA is benefiting as a whole, but that development that's being affected and the residents are getting nothing in return. So NITIA needs to think about affordable housing for who? You're saying, oh, NITIA residents can apply. How many of those apartments are affording to NITIA residents? What, ten apartments, twenty-five, maybe a hundred, two hundred apartments? It's not great. You know, you look at NITIA's annual of the income of the families that live at NITIA, twenty-five thousand. They cannot afford to move into these private apartments. You think families don't want to leave NITIA and live better? We need to come back and think about the residents and how you're affecting them. Because I know in Fulton Houses, your building, we were told that they would not start until they fixed the playground, until they did other work on the property, because this was a deal made with the developers. They started building, haven't done anything to the playgrounds, anything to the parts that they say they would fix the quality of life for the residents. So NITIA really needs to put their foot down when developers say they're gonna do and give back to the communities, and they're not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Next, we have Ruby Kitchen from King Towers, and then followed by Cesar Pujols from Whitman.
Good afternoon, everybody. First of all, we got to recognize residents. You have to understand, we have voices, we have feelings, and we know our needs and our wants. We don't need people to continue to choke stuff down our throat that does not work. Talk to us. Let us have some input before you bring all of this stuff to us. We go to cluster meetings, we know more than the cluster teachers. So, I mean, that's a waste of time and money. Take that money and do something with it. We have resident leaders that know more than some of you at that table. We don't mind that, but we don't mind sharing what we know if you allow us to have some input in what's going on. I've asked for several years, why don't you get the senior people and let them do some free training? Free training. At least our residents will know what's going on. Right now, they come to the meeting, everybody's sitting, and they're looking at each other, and don't know what, what, who's who. And it's sad. We have this, our chairman, I spoke to you before, and I'm telling you, we got to do better about taking our own resources, recycling them. You don't need to recycle the bottles, you need to recycle the people. We need to find out more about what this place is going to. Right now, I really feel very bad. I come down here, all this wind and rain and everything tonight, and look at the people. Where are they? And I, right now, we're in the worst kind of situation that we could be in. It's not my fault, it's not your fault, it's not his fault, or she fault, whoever. But it's all about, we're in this together. So whether you want to believe it or not, and you worried about talking about our apartments, without our apartments, there would be no jobs. So we need each other, whether you want to believe it or not. You need us and we need you. And I want you to know, I've been working with you for thirty-some odd years for free, and I'm very willing to continue to work, and we're gonna get something out of that. I don't have time for monsters, I don't have time for who hate who, and paying all of these games that they're playing. They have people that have contacts, you got money here, switching from one place to the other. Like Budweiser was saying, her money been set up someplace for years. It took me twenty years, from two thousand to two thousand and ten, ten years, to get money that one of the federal presidents had donated to New York City Housing Authority. And it was only until I came to a meeting like this one night and spoke on it, and all of a sudden, the money came up, it was only two hundred thousand, but when it came up, it came to two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That's how much interest it had been increased over time that they was holding. And I'm talking like this because I'm angry.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchen. We're gonna have to wrap up your comments.
Come up to King Towers too, and help me in my situation. Because I need help, 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 okay?
Thank you, Ms. Kitchen.
Stop wasting our time, let us do something so we can get things done and not spend our two hundred dollars and seventy thousand dollars to come down here.
We're gonna move on to...
That's true, and I bet I'd ask you.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to Robert Swain from Cypress Hills. Number ten, Robert Swain from Cypress Hills. Swan, apologize.
Good evening, good afternoon, everyone. I am Cypress Hill, I'm a disabled veteran, and I do have lots of complaints. First thing, the elevator, they're old, they need to be repaired. Now I guess the elevator in my building alone, it constantly breaking down. And I call the Manhattan, it's here, seven one, whatever, anyone call it. And they push the button, it's here for elevator, session, push number one, this should be twenty minutes. I stayed on it for an hour and a half, I ended up calling nine one one, police department called and got through. I'm stuck in, I'm stuck in on my floor. They had to get fire department or the police department to get me out of my building. That's ridiculous. Like this morning, no hot water, I had to be washed up in cold water. But I'm used to it because I'm a vet. I'm used to be washing up in cold water. Any vet used to be doing that out in the field. That's, that's, that's the part. I pay my rent all the time, and I get this kind of service? It's ridiculous.
So Mr. Swan, I'm gonna ask someone from Brooklyn Property Management to speak with you.
And plus, when I go downstairs to the office, the housing office, when I speak to HA, you got some HA people in there, got attitude. I ain't doing nothing. See, I don't mess with nobody in my complex, anybody change. When you push me, I push back, because I'm a Marine. And I push, and I push back on. And I don't keep damn full lights in the night, I'm not here to be locked. I'm here to assist.
Can we have someone from Brooklyn Property Management speak with Mr. Swan?
And plus, I put it in the order six months, or eight months ago, under doctor's care for disability, uh, toilet. That's six months ago. I still didn't receive it. That's what's going on.
Thank you. Mr. Pujols? Following, we will have Christine Verrelant from King Towers.
Mr. Pujols, he's a resident at one twenty-four Carton Avenue. And he says that, he says residents and non-residents smoke in the stairs, elevators, lobby of the building. And they also, the residents vandalize the entrance door. They try to get in, and they jam the door, and they pull it, and they kick it, and they're residents and non-residents. And they, um, they do what they're remake in the lobbies and the hallway sub-bill.
Thank you. Christine Verrelant from King Towers, followed by Loretta Humphries from FHA. Christine Verrelant? Okay, we're gonna move on to Loretta Humphries?
Yes, good evening.
Thank you.
Top chairperson to the board. My name is Loretta Humphries, I'm an FHA resident. And we have three FHA residents who are here today. And these residents have, are saying that they still have not got their homes. Now, um, we don't know what NITIA is doing. It's a strategic plan going on where the houses are not being repaired. And they have, they are trying to deem people inhabitable, the homes inhabitable to live in, so that these houses can be given to restored homes and habitat for humanity. We were told we would not be displaced. It is unfair that NITIA is holding back funds from the FHA residents who still live in these private homes. And that a solution needs to be, there needs to be a solution for all the residents, whether they're in a multi-dwelling or a single-family home. To, to kick people out is not, is really not fair, to displace them is not fair. And the money that is distributed by HUD for these FHA homes, these houses need to be repaired. and, uh, I have, I have heard, and I was told, that they are not going to repair these houses that the people live in because they want to deem them inhabitable to live in so that they can be thrown out, so that they can be given to habitat for humanity or restored homes. Now, I was offered a house, I have not gotten my house yet, Ms. Robinson was offered a house, she has not gotten her house yet, uh, Ms. Wise has, uh, offered a home, she has not gotten her house yet. As per the policy and the procedure, uh, we were supposed to, uh, have a transfer of titleship to these homes. These residents have lived in their homes some forty and fifty years, I personally have been in my home for thirty years, there has got to be a solution, and I would like to see something online in regards to the, what I'm speaking about now. Now, I'm going to, my elected officials, I don't want to start naming names, you did not come to the residents of the FHA homes to come to a solution, you went to one person, I do not want to start calling elected officials' names, and I do not want to start calling a certain person's name, but there has got to be some transparency, you need to come to the residents for a solution, because we have a solution.
Thank you. Renee Hill, followed by Donna Stevenson.
Hi, I'm Renee Hill, um, I'm, well, I'm here for a different reason, um, I was here with, uh, Loretta, because I don't understand, I did live in a house and we promised it after thirty years, and then they want to throw you out, um, and she's done everything she's followed the rules, and, uh, she was supposed to rent it with the option to buy, so all of a sudden now they're making profits off of these other homes, and they want them to be displaced or leave, and, uh, that's kind of unfair, so I think that needs to be corrected. Now, I went, I know that everyone here, uh, that lives in NYCHA building, um, wants their own home, and you have a restored home plan, and I went around with my daughter, who's young, you know, uh, so you have, she has low income, and, um, we were told when we were looking at some of the homes, that they're already dipped down, this is before the lottery. So, I, I don't know if you have anything to do with restored homes, but, uh, Loretta thought I should come and, or have a talk, but, uh, this is not the first time I've heard that the homes are already, uh, given away to someone, possibly a friend, I don't know, I'm just assuming, uh, but I don't think it's a true lottery, and it's, I'm gonna make it my, uh, my mission to find out what's happening, so that's all I want to say, and I'm very upset about that.
Thank you. Donna Stevenson.
Yes, my name is Donna Stevenson, I live in Elliott Chelsea Housing Authority, and I would like to know, what can you do for safety to live in the housing authority? I lived in Elliott Chelsea for twenty-one years, and... I have been in stock for, since two thousand fifteen, and I tried everything, I tried for a transfer last year, but I was denied it because I didn't have a police report. I tried again this year, and they're trying to get me a transfer out of housing, but I feel so trapped.
We're gonna have, um, Yugo Baskett from Bailey Partners will come speak with you now.
And I can't move because I can't afford to move. I went to management office, and I don't care, so I went to my own, I, I walked the mayor, I went to Alshottan, I went to peace council, I, I tried.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Thank you. Sharon Jonas, followed by Herman Collins. Do we have Sharon Jonas?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Sharon Jonas, and I live at Boulevard House. And recently, I received a thing that my house gonna be raised, the rent gonna be raised. The income I receive is not enough to pay the rent, I have a song that artistic, I have to take the European, so I don't know who is next to argue for it, I gotta do, because I can't afford the rent.
Okay, Ms. Jonas, we're gonna ask you to speak with someone from Brooklyn Property Management in the back of the aisle, Herman.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Herman Collins. Then following, we will have Brenda Temple.
Hello, my name is Herman Collins, Auburn, Far Rockaway. I'm, uh, speaking on behalf of what is actually going on, I don't know with anybody else seeing picture, but I'm not, uh, I'm trying to say that you're going up on people's rent, you're not fixing anything, you're making things even worse than what it was before. I see the picture, I don't know about anybody else, all I see is one thing, you're gonna sell these here places, and why don't you just tell us people what you're gonna do? And there it is. Well, after more time, and with the other time, you're talking about selling, uh, letting people smoke cigarettes in the house, but in the meantime, what about the reefers? We got, we got seniors, I'm a senior, I was taking the project when I was young, I'm a senior, and there's many other seniors, and most of us are very sickly people, and we're taking, we, we're taking pills when we're going out, and we don't have any money. Y'all are talking about how to make yours money come down so y'all could be able to, to make it, to survive and have jobs for yourselves, but you're not thinking about us, we don't have any money, where are we gonna get this money from? They're not giving us any more money on our social security, they're not giving us any more money on our pensions, so what, how are we gonna survive? I don't understand how y'all can just set up and act like that y'all, uh, uh, I'm not trying to just, uh, 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 mock you or say anything, but I don't know how you can just sit there and honestly have us to come here and know very well exactly what you're gonna do. We're sitting back just like sheep, sitting back to be slaughtered, and we're constantly coming to meetings, and you have these peoples set up in these here offices that don't know, like the young lady said, that don't know nothing, they sit in the office, they don't know nothing, they tell us, give us a snow job, we're just gonna go on. Now, here we are, and after, after, after the storm, four years ago, nothing has been fixed at Far Rockaway, nothing, everything is being deteriorated. The roof, since I've been there, you were trained that you were fixing the roof three times, do you know how much money you could have gave a person to live off with all that money going up on the roof? You're giving all the money right back to the property developers, but we know that y'all got shares in those things, we know that.
Y'all, y'all, it's a snow job, and it's terrible. Keep talking, brother.
It's terrible, it's really, it's really sick, and how do y'all sleep is beyond me, how do y'all sleep is beyond me?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Herman, next we have Brenda Temple, followed by Harold Aldridge.
Hello, my name is Brenda Temple, thank you for the comments around the room, thank you for letting our voices be heard, I am a resident of NYCHA, I live in Ocean Bay Houses in Far Rockaway, I am on the ocean side, but I also speak up for all of the NYCHA developments, and especially the, uh, Ocean Bay on the bay side that has just turned privatized. So what I'd like to say is that, you say, give me your tired, your poor, then you say, get back, you tired, you poor, I didn't come here, my people didn't come here voluntarily, but because of the blood, sweat, and tears of my forefathers, of our forefathers, we have the opportunity to be in America and to live and to thrive and to strive for a better life for ourselves and our community and our families. And I'm so upset, I'm upset, the residents of NYCHA are upset, they're confused, they're afraid, because we know that there is no real transparency going on. You ask us for our input, and you don't listen to us, you just tell us what's going to happen, you show us the, uh, the screenings and the films, and, uh, you, you just explain to us what you're going to do without our real input, you act like you're listening to us, but you're really not. The thing is that I am concerned about the eviction process of the low-income residents of NYCHA as a result of the privatization. Uh, you say that, uh, you're going to have a lot of apartments for affordable housing, but affordable housing, affordable income is unaffordable for low-income residents. We are your home caretakers, your home care workers, your cooks, your cleaners, your teachers, your teachers assistants, you know, we're your nurses aides, we wipe your parents behind for God's sake, we take care of them, and your children, you know, what would happen? We're the backbone of this society, and what we're saying is what would happen without us to this city, it would be doomed. What we're saying is that we need a place to feel deal and heal, we need a place to be affordable, we, we pay our rent, yes, uh, NYCHA has deteriorated as a result of much neglect, which is mostly not of our own fault, not of our own doing. So what we're asking you is transparency as to the eviction process that will allow so-called affordable income residents to move in, what are you going to do with the low-income residents that are here now, that are struggling to get, have their rent paid, taking care of their families, they're seniors? We make minimum wage, that is not going up for us, we wanted to, but the, the, what do you call it? The main income, the, the, what is it called? The median income is not reflected in our paychecks, we need to keep NYCHA low-income. We are so afraid of the process of affordability that it will displace and evict a lot of us, where are we supposed to go from here? Now, I know...
Ms. Temple, we're gonna ask that you wrap up your comments.
I'll wrap up, I just want to say that there are many success stories that have come out of New York City Housing, in all five boroughs, and all over the United States, uh, we have success stories that you don't hear about, and what I'm saying is that...
Thank you, Ms. Temple.
We need a place to raise our families, to feel deal and heal, allow us this, allow us at least this, be humane.
Thank you, Ms. Temple. Next we have Harold Aldridge, followed by Carol Scarborough, we have many speakers, so I would ask that you please keep your comments to a three-minute mark. Harold, thank you.
Um, good evening, everybody, and the board, I moved here in seventy-one years, and I was taught, you know, to do my own work, and that's the thing with my house, when I first arrived at the house, I actually was a little bit ashamed, so I'm just, so I wouldn't be in a dormitory, though, I'm, I'm thinking of improving myself, raising myself up. I had to use cardboard and tape to put a shade over the window, because it looks kind of soft, like the window hanging on, everything hanging down, I had to install my own curtains using tape because it's not my property, I can't put a handle or nail to it, it's my kids' property, it's Sonny's property, so I, I, I had to fix my own things up myself. Things that, that is, there is improvement applied, there is the, uh, the system with the air conditioning unit, which I don't use, but I'm registered as, as, as a healthy worker, but I don't use it, I like to know, am I being charged for these things that I'm healthy for, or not using? And so, and, and as a vet, as a veteran, seventy years old, I'm not expected to like decent living conditions, but what also guys like, that decent living condition, and I take my clothes to, to the laundry twice a week, and I, and I'm being charged for washer and dryer, but I have no way of knowing it because I can't get communication, my biggest problem is, when I go down to get communication, I can't get it, and then I don't know what is going on, why I can't get communication, what I get is, is I get a person sitting at the counter, and says, I don't know what you want, but that's not my job, who's to visit to watch them, to oversee them, to see if they're doing their job? Just because I'm seventy-one years old, doesn't mean I don't like a decent living, I don't want to stay in a dormitory, man, a man is, is, is just important to his life because he pass, he pass down all his things to his nephews and his children, and he keeps himself up, so the nephews will do the too, they don't have to be told to do, they can go to uncle's house and see if he takes care of him, so, well, they have the best window in the house, and they didn't, Sonny didn't know, but what I'm saying is, aren't these things supposed to be, a lie to me, I shouldn't have to go and beg for a shade to get up, stick a window, use a tape and a clay to hang up a window thing for decency?
Mr. Aldridge, you're from, I have that you're from Boulevard Houses.
Boulevard Houses, yes.
We have staff in the back who can assist you with your personal apartment needs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Scarborough from Polo Grounds, and then Juana Lino from Goonis. We're up to nineteen.
Good evening, Madam Chair, how are you, and to your board? It's so disheartening here in office this evening, um, it's nothing new, you know, we try to do our best in terms of going to, for instance, the roundtable discussion, you know, getting involved, please don't take my picture, don't want to take anything, going to various meetings, getting on the resident association, you just seem like basically all it was is a fact-finding mission to find out how many people, how long you live in the development, uh, how many rooms you have, you know, it's, instead of worrying about our quality of life issues, like for instance, the doors, those doors are broken more often than anything I can, I can see that's going on, the, the grounds are littered with debris and paper, the elevators smelling like urine, I'm gonna say that the workers do their best with what, what, what they have, but still the conditions that we're living under are subhuman. We have the dogs that are prohibited, that population has increased, we're seeing dog poop all over the place, we had to deal with heat and hot water, like everyone else is saying, ever since November two thousand fifteen, you came up to Polo Grounds, it got better for a while, but then after that, it went back to the same old thing, just in February, the, the water, heat and hot water got better. So my thing is, just like a lot of folks are saying, where is the transparency? Why aren't you guys accountable? We want to live decent like everybody else want to live decent. I, I don't, I don't understand, but you don't, you guys don't be careful. We come year after year to these meetings, and nothing is being resolved, you know, and I hate this, I really hate to say this, but you guys seem like the worst slum lords there is in New York City. You know, and I do want to say, I'm appreciative of what makes you... You know, and I do want to say I'm appreciative what Mayor DePlazza has done with the MAP program, putting the lights and the cameras in all of the buildings. But what good is the cameras if you're not getting the culprits that are causing the problem? You know, and then we have residents that's getting on y'all doing the Airbnb. They're selling their apartments. They're coming, they're breaking doors. Every time a glass is broken, I'm here, and I don't know if it's true, but I'm saying, those glass cost six thousand dollars. So my thing is, it has to be a better solution in order to deal with the problems that we're dealing with.
Thank you, Ms. Scarborough. Juana Lino, followed by Mr. Brown.
Good evening. So I'm from Juana's Houses, I'm the Secretary of the Resident Association. I just wanted to, I guess, congratulate you on something that you did, which was install, give the caretakers or the maintenance workers the electric device so that we were able to track the work a lot more efficiently. I did want to know, and you know, just piggyback on a lot that was shared today, that, you know, you guys need the residents to sort of be able to do better within NITRA. Transparency, communication. Yes, it's great that you guys have all these great ideas, but it doesn't make sense if you don't, you know, you don't ask for the input of the residents. The residents could have given some insight to these changes you want to implement. I mean, we're the root of, you know, change in NITRA. You guys, it's great that you guys have these positions, but the residents sort of should have a say in what happens within their developments. It's not a one-size-fits-all. Every development has different needs. We were promised that the community center was gonna open, and until this day, it still hasn't opened. The senior is running as a senior center, but our children need a place to go. It's not right that they have to walk up to Red Hook or have to go to White Hook. I love my neighbors, but we have a community center within our development. They shouldn't have to commute to another development to use their community center. And I, and we were also allotted some money, and we haven't seen that money as well. So, you know, I want to feel like I want, I want to believe that I can trust you and go by what you say, but I can't, because where's the money? Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown, followed by Cesar Yoke.
Good evening. Good evening, Ms. Hudson.
Good evening.
Chair, Mr. Kelly, and our board. I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this evening, to address this forum, and also for the comments by the other residents that are here. I find some of it very disheartening. But I also want to thank you, Ms. Hudson, for having staff on duty to work with you to find a resolution. I will submit my written comments, but I just want to address one thing. For seven years, I've been coming here and asking for Section Three training for NITRA management and residents. Dr. Ben Carson, Secretary of Health, has been going around the country, speaking to residents and other groups, and his focus has been Section Three. And with that said, I would want us to be prepared and have the training before the final rule is released. I firmly believe that nothing else in the federal government can deliver a minimum fifty percent ROI return on investment on every dollar invested, which raises the list amongst us to the ranks of middle income or middle class, if you will. So I'm gonna make my request simple. I'm gonna ask, would you please let an RFP for Section Three training for NITRA management and the residents, so that we can be prepared so when the final rule is released, we're already in place? Would you please do that? I'm waiting for our response.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Cesar Yoke from Millbrook, followed by Darrell Henderson. We will take your comments and respond. You're welcome.
Good evening to all of you. My name is Cesar Yoke. I'm a community board member in my area section of Los Alamos. And a resident of public housing for over twenty years. One of the greatest concerns in our neighborhood is rapid development. Development, which is leading to rapid gentrification. In NITRA, as much of the last remaining large public housing authorities in the United States, we end up being the last affordable place for most Alamos residents. We need to come up with an innovative strategy to save public housing and provide fair housing. Also to provide the best customer services to residents. I have a degree in urban planning from art college in the Bachelor of Science for the SUNY College of Environmental Design and Forestry. My educational experience working in my community has taught me that need to think outside the box to bring some ideas on how to solve urban problems. Some of what I have to say has been done before. I'm only going to live a few. Today, we are dealing with issues of climate change, and we need to proactively reduce the use of fossil fuels. This reduction has helped in minimizing the cost of energy that is needed to operate the developments. NITRA spends over a hundred million in energy production and distribution to heat and electrify developments. It's been increased because of the outdated heating systems. Today, has to be a way to reduce energy costs and it starts with maximum power theories. One other issue is trash. Money is made through the transportation of trash. But it's being done to make money out of trash. We need to better manage funding because of forty-five policies. We cannot spend that money anymore. All the issues are jobs, crime, and education. Not going into detail for this stuff, because I don't have enough time. These are a few, and many others, I will say, if time allows. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Darrell Henderson, followed by Audrey Clemmons.
Good evening, my name is Darrell Henderson. I live in Red Hook Projects, Red Hook East. I've been there for close to like twenty-something years. My concern is that after saying, what had happened was is that there was they was training people, okay, through OSHA, to be able to, you know, to some residents who are actually living in NITRA housing, will get jobs to be able to do certain things. With the people in the community who I've found out who received those OSHA cards, I guess it's because I've been kitchen manager most of my time, and it made me ask these people, what did you learn? You know, what are you gonna be doing? I've come across fifteen people who have OSHA cards, no job, and still are not working. And I think that needs, I mean, if there was any real interest to be able to get these people some real employment, there needs to be something done about that. And one of the things I thought about that is if there was any real interest in getting somebody some employment, then why are they training people to do nothing? I think what really, what's really needed is that the jobs. In order, you know, to get people to have, you know, a real job is that they get certified in some real training. If they're receiving real certification, then there's a chance that they may, you know, have something to work with, because with the certifications like cranes, bulldozers, and things of that sort, right, are not things that they could just use for natural, but they could use elsewhere, yet they don't get this kind of training. And so, with the fifteen people I've come across, none of them have jobs. I think if there was a real interest in cutting down the recidivism rate, as one person mentioned about people coming out of jail and coming to the street, they just end up doing something over and over again, in and out of jail, until they end up doing something very serious. I think what needs to be done is that if people get real certification jobs, that it will get not only a sense of pride, but actually lead them to some real employment. The thing is, is that when I came across these people to talk to them, right, I mean, these are people that are disenfranchised. So you can't expect the crime level to go down when you don't have anything to offer in place of that.
Mr. Henderson, if it's okay, I'm gonna connect you with someone from our race department for an exchange of ideas in the back. Thank you for your comments. Audrey Clemmons, followed by Carmen Quinones.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Audrey Clemmons. I'm the president of PS 139 Convergent. This building was first elementary school, but now I don't know, I don't know when it was. But in nineteen sixty-eight, it was converted into apartment. Not since has the frame, pipes been working on. Now the pipes are continuing breaking, and when maintenance come to a period, it only is done with bandage. This means that the walls are not truly dry, and before we know it, mildew mold has grown. I'm here to say that this is no way any person should be living, especially as we have age, and many of us are seniors, have developed respiratory problems. And even the windows in our building need to be repaired. And they keep on saying they're gonna repair it, but nothing is being done. Thank you.
Thank you. Carmen Quinones, followed by Rose Bergen.
First, my name is Carmen Quinones. I'm the president of Douglas Houses. The first thing I want to say is I want to thank Michael Kelly for his outstanding leadership. Victor Ross, thank you so much. I don't know what I would do without you two. Shilla, I haven't seen you in a while, but I'm waiting to get a meeting with you as soon as possible. There's a lot going on, and it's in every development. We have a lot of problems, okay, with pipes and mold, and all of that is all fine. My thing is, what's happening with the money? Because when I started, I'm only here a year and a half, okay? Actually, I've gone on two years being president. When we first started, we had a budget of two hundred and fifty-four dollars. This is, and this is happening in all of NITRA. It's not just me. Then I get another budget that says it's eighty-nine thousand dollars. What happens to that money? Where has it gone? Because for Douglas, each unit gets money. So to take that money away from these units, you're taking money away from the residents. What gives anyone that right? That's how we get our money? I have not gotten an answer to that. I can't get financial statements. There's no financial statements from two thousand one to two thousand six. I mean, what is going on with this money? How are we supposed to trust anyone? If we cannot even get an account of what is happening in our own developments, okay? On decop, you know? These are, this is serious. When this money, listen, now you have an agreement that you want residents to sign. In that agreement, in no fashion or form, says I'm not want, as a president, I'm not gonna be responsible for past debts. But yet, NITRA is taking forty percent. They're not, they want us to take all our ability. We are, we get ordered it, we have to pay taxes, but then NITRA tells us exactly what to do with it. So which is it? Are we going to be the owners? Are we gonna be the CEOs of our TPA funds? Or you? Because I'm getting mixed things. You're both in it. You know, you tell us how to do it, you tell us how to spend it. We still gotta make a proposal, but we take all the risk. This is not a job for me, okay? This is volunteer. I don't get paid for this. And I am not, and I want it to be public. I am not going to jail for something I don't know about, monies I don't know about. And a lot of us feel the same way. This room, it may not be full, but I just came from Washington. I went to Washington on Tuesday and thought, shut down Trump's house to fight for more money. I am, I am, I believe in the fight and getting money. When the thing of the one billion dollars, who you think started that billion dollars? I did. I confronted, I confronted our mayor at City Hall, left a letter. He came and he had a town hall meeting, called me personally to tell me, Carmen, guess what? We're gonna give you all the billion dollars. That was me.
Thank you.
That was me at my residence. And so we continue to fight. I'm here to support you, but I need the transparency. And I just want to say again, I get a lot of help from this board. I'm not taking anything from you guys. Well, something's gotta get done, that agreement has to be looked at before we sign anything.
Thank you, Ms. Quinones. Rose Bergen, and then Mildred Martinez.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the board. Welcome to the new board members, I don't have a chance to meet you personally yet. Victor Gonzalez, Michael Kelly, our general manager, our chairwoman, Shilla Trae. As a former smoker, who smoked for thirty-odd years, it's probably one of the hardest addictions to give up. I don't know how many people miss from smoke or did smoke. Now, I have no problem with a building attempting to go smoke-free, because that's really what it's gonna be, it's gonna be an attempt, okay? We can't get them to stop smoking weed and bad weed at that, okay? We can't get them from doing drugs and leaving needles and ballways for our children to pick up. So how are we, as the housing authority, us as the residents, working with the housing authority, gonna get, what is gonna be the solution for us to have this smoke-free building? You know, my daughter lived in a four-thousand-five-hundred-dollar-a-month apartment, and the guy next door to her smoked weed all the time. That's one of the reasons why she moved. So weed is gonna be legal, okay, believe it or not. So how, what is the solution gonna be for this? We can't stop what's going on now. We don't enforce the rules and regulations that we have in place now. So what, how are we gonna do this? I mean, secondhand smoke kills. So does shooting heroin. So does inhaling weed from my next-door neighbor, upstairs, downstairs, next door. I mean, that's all bad for our health. I mean, I don't think there's one person in this room that can say they can't mind something that's bad for our health. But the smoke-free building? We can't get the pipes to- We can't get the pipes to stay in without busting. We can't get the heat to come on when it's supposed to come on. You know, we can't get the garbage picked up. Black House is a, is, is a lost cause, in my opinion. But getting back to the, to the weed. Because I asked at another building up in Ninety-Nine Street where they're going to be building, well, they are building rather, and it's a Nitro Section Eight something they called it. And I asked, what about medical, uh, medical marijuana? And I was told that it came in liquid form. So that's really, I really don't know that much about marijuana. But I just want to know, how are we going to enforce this? If you walk past someone's apartment and you smell smoke, what are you going to call them? The smoke police? I mean, I'm not trying to be funny, I'm, I'm being real. You know, I gave up smoking because it was, finally I realized it was bad for my health and I didn't want it to have that around my grandchildren. But the reality is, how are we going to enforce it? I'm about enforcing. We need to get back to finding solutions and enforcement. That's what we need to do collectively. And I welcome every resident that is here this evening, okay? That did take the time to come out of their busy schedules to, to attend this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bergen. I'm going to ask that if you are able, please make your way to the front. We have, we're up to twenty-eight and we have forty speakers and I would like to get to everyone. It's already seven fifteen. So if you're able, please make your way up to the front, to the microphones, so that we're ready to go. So we have Mildred Martinez, followed by Ronald Topping, and then Lesvia Vascones.
Good evening, and everybody here. My name is Mildred Martinez and I'm a resident from Campbell's Plaza. And I'm here to inform the residents that we do have someone in the lower east side that's planning to run for city council. Her name is Sanchez, Jasmine Sanchez, and she was born and raised in New York City Housing Authority. But that's just to let you know that we're trying to organize to see how we're going to stop this freight train that's coming and it's going to knock us all out. Now, as far as the, why we don't have enough people out here? Because Nitro didn't take the time to mail us, okay? Invitation to visit there. I found out through a friend that sent me an email. Why should I go through an email when they shouldn't put it under my mail, okay? Or under my door? But that's no mirror here or there. They give it to the residents, they make, or they, they give it to the residents. You can barely read it because it's all light, okay? That's another one. As far as the doors, why are they always broken? Because when you go to your management for a key, there's never no keys, okay? And then if you, if you get on the waiting list, you have to wait months before you can get one key. Then in regards to your departments, I'm just going to bits and pieces. But as far as your departments, your social workers, they're underutilized with so many issues that are going on in housing, okay? Have you taken each and every one of the people that are working, receiving a nice payment that should be going into the developments to find out, why can't they pay that rent? What's going on in their homes? You can never find no one when you go in and receive a ten-day notice to let you know that we're going to start the eviction process. Now, to the point that I was going to start was that I have about fifteen people that I have been advocating for to stop them from being evicted. Now, a lot of them, I just want a case in November the seventh, two thousand and sixteen. The person that I, the family that I say from being evicted was Felix Garcia. He had been trying to get on the lease for more than ten or fifteen years. The parents died trying to put them on, never was able to. Then they go down on the people, the residents go down and try to participate in the due process of, of your rules and regulations to request for the forms to be documented or lease acknowledged so that you can get that extra revenue. And you still don't even want to do that. How is it? Your housing management is so rude, so disrespectful, so... I mean, I cannot believe the way they treat our residents and let expect them to respect them. Now, we have so many people that are in such desperate need and I need for someone to save these fifteen people that are on the list to be evicted because their parents died, their family member died, and no one bothered to give them the, the permission slip? That is not fair. And I feel this way. If we, that I was the president for fifteen years in Campbell's Plaza and I organized my development to paint the building. I had to fight Nitro to give me the appointment so the residents can paint. And we did it all in one weekend. Why can't we do that if we organized well?
Martinez, I'm going to ask that you conclude your comments.
What I just want to know is, what's going to happen with these families that can't get on?
We can't.
The, the, get the permission slip to be able to be added onto the lease and save them from being, they're already homeless.
We need to conclude your comments, Ms. Bussis, that's right behind you and she can speak with you more. Thank you. Ronald Topping, Lesvia Vascones, and then Trudy Poe.
Good evening, and please embrace everyone. My name is Ronald Topping, president of Adam Houses in South Bronx. I'm also president of the advisory council for three other developments, Robert E. Moore Houses, St. Mary's, and John Adam Lavagivore. Why am I not in the advisory board? Because we don't have community centers. We're doing partnerships with these organizations. These kids got nothing to do. I am told a hundred and six billion dollars have been going down the tubes and now we don't have community centers, we have the partnership. Nitro's got unutilized space, we're doing nothing with it. The rent man comes in, he wants to take back the property and set it at a price that we can't afford. We are the former ancestors that built this nation, built this country, built this city, and now you want to kick us out? We even traded the cotton on Wall Street for you. Couldn't even have fifteen people at the funeral that was against the law. When will we be able to be satisfied? We can't be satisfied with what we're doing. People are going to be out in the streets. What are we going to do about that? We need to fix these buildings. We need to find somebody and stop asking us to give more. You keep giving more, we're going to have nothing left to take. When is that going to stop? We need to focus on what we need to do for the people of this city. This is the place that we need to be. We were the ones who took those whips and took all of that stuff. Didn't want to educate us. The minute we get a little something, you want to upgrade. You're never even the playing field. We can't play ball with you if you don't even the field. We need to work together. We need to have resident leaders be a part of this planning board. You can't tell by the act because I, I didn't even get a notice. Somebody emailed me. That's how I got here. My building didn't even have a notice. We need to communicate more and work because somebody in your family may be living in public housing. We didn't all come to here with a silver spoon. We had to work for what we had. And most of the Nitro people that live in Nitro work, so we're not lazy. We are accountable people, we can't be accountable. Bring back community centers that will work. Bring back the damn Section Three and make sure they get the job. No people are not getting a job. We got people along the island getting no job. They got money? We're the poor people, where are we going to go? We did everything for you, and we're never good enough. Stop pending poor people against one another and let us do what we need to do and help us. And that's no justice that's not for the needy people.
And then there was Vascones, Trudy Poe, and then Miguel Acevedo.
My name is Trudy Poe, I'm from the Bronx. TA President at thirteen twenty-five Franklin Avenue, a senior development. Good evening to the chairwoman, to all the Ninety Year Workers, to each and every one of them. My concern is this Convergent, Rad Convergent. We would, to myself, would like an explanation on that and what's going to be after the Convergent of the development. I have five tenants that came alone, which I thank God that they pressed their way because one has a walker and the other, one has a cane, the other have a bad knee, but they pressed to come down here because they want answers. They want to know about this, okay? I believe that my development has the units that are going to be converted or whatever it might be, and we want to know what's going to be. We know, but we figuring that the rent is going to go higher. But if we can't pay that rent, then what's going to happen?
Ms. Poe, we have Leroy Williams in the back, he's going to speak with you directly.
Okay, also, I want to act sure if you could make up flyers for my tenants and pass them to the management office on this, in Spanish and English. I have a problem with your flyers also. Ninety percent of my development is Hispanic people. And I want them to know as well as the English people, what's happening. They have my whole field. And then I have enough concern when a tenant stove is tagged by, by the fire department, they give them hot plates. Why would they give a elderly person at the age of, say, eighty or ninety, a hot plate? Some of them are afraid of those hot plates, they're very dangerous. I think they should be priority two of stoves, okay? I've seen people getting stoves in the, in developments, young people. Oh, I got a new stove in, I have tenants in my development that's been waiting for a stove for over a month, have a hot plate. And I don't think that's right.
Thank you, Ms. Poe. Miguel Acevedo, Vernell Robinson, and then Teresa Coles Regan.
Good evening, my name is Miguel Acevedo, Fulton Houses Tenant Association President. First, I feel everybody's pain. I also feel fortunate that at Fulton Houses, we don't have any of those issues. And I thank God and the New York City Housing Authority to take care of my families at Fulton Houses. One of the other things that I want to say, why me personally and my board and many of the families living at Fulton Houses support the next generation plan and a building that is going to be built in one of our apartment lots, it should be completed within the next two years. We're fortunate that affordable housing is being built in a community like Chelsea. Chelsea is so gentrified today that if not for this affordable housing building that's being built at Fulton, I know for a fact, my son, my daughter, my nephew, my nieces, and others won't be living in Chelsea in two thousand and twenty. So we're fortunate to have this. And I would love to go to other developments to make it work for you as it works for us at Fulton Houses because the staff at the New York City Housing Authority have worked from day one since I've been the president of Fulton Houses to make sure that we are satisfied from our hot water, from our heat, from our stoves. We don't have any of those problems. Another, the only time that a tenant leaves Fulton Houses, it's unfortunate, is when they die. Other than that, they don't leave Fulton Houses. That's how good it is for us at Fulton Houses. I feel your pain, like I said, but we're fortunate at Fulton Houses and we appreciate the work that the New York City Housing Authority does for us.
Thank you, Mrs. Acevedo. Vernell Robinson.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you all for having this forum. And it is unfortunate that this forum wasn't publicized, upped the size, better than what it was. I want you guys to hear and understand it. A lot of smoking mirrors are going on in here. Y'all hear me? No, really hear me? Y'all have been coming up here complaining about individual things and all that other stuff. What this forum was supposed to be about was smoking cigarettes in their apartments, they're banning it, and bad. All right? And at the end of the day, what New York City Housing Authority has to do, because the federal government has been taking money back and the cities say they want to put money in, is do what they have to do to keep the development going, keep their jobs going. They're not looking to make repairs to our apartments, that's not what they're looking to do because this amendment that they're making is to include more developments on the Rad List. Y'all need to understand what that mean, okay? At the end of the day, we're going to lose our homes, okay? Because when Rad comes in, although I was conflicted between it because it seemed like such a good thing because of the, um, private developers are coming and fixing the places and all the rest, but as soon as you move out, the park goes on red roads because of developers and they're going to take it off the public housing list. So more and more problems will be reduced, to reduce, to reduce, okay? At the end of the day, we need to get organized. I went to an organization called Community Voice heard. If you haven't heard it, check it out on the website. We got to get organized, people, because we losing our homes. They're using the cigarettes, the, I mean, come on, how much money y'all spending? How much money y'all really spending to put into this project? When that money can go towards something more viable, like some repairs. My roof just caved in on Saturday. My roof, my kitchen, because it's a shoddy roof repair work that's going on. I can come here and talk about other little side issues, but that's not the point. My point is rad. The point is rad. And at the end of the day, just like they're trying to take our homes, they're doing it undercover. When I said smoking mirrors, y'all, it's smoking mirrors. New York City Housing Authority is trying to take away our community space for us to meet. If we can't meet, we can't organize. And those darn presidents who signed off on that mess, we don't need them in our positions. We don't need them representing us because they're not representing us. They rubber stamp everything Nitro says for them to do. And at the end of the day, we're losing it. Y'all need to know that we're people on your boards that's going to speak and represent you, not people that's going to rubber stamp everything Nitro says for them to do. It's too much, it's too many things at stake, y'all. I mean, granted, I know we've all got issues, we got problems, and that's why y'all here. Y'all thought this was a perfect opportunity to then, as a plan, to get your job in place, sir. Well, that's not what this is about, y'all. Don't y'all have any time to go and keep saying, oh, somebody going to talk to you, somebody going to call to you? Just go back there. Come on, it's a bigger issue at stake. It's a bigger issue at stake. I'm sorry, no, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you. So y'all need to organize. Go on the website, you really wish, you really wish time to get involved.
Thank you. Teresa Coles Regan, and Chris Lee Medelant, followed by Joshua Barnett.
Teresa Coles Regan here. I'm, I'm here, and what do you think, everybody? My, my agenda is, I say, I live in general, Red Houses. And you have these resident watches and all this stuff. They're not watching, there's no resident watch, there's their private sandbox downstairs for this tenant control thing. And what the lady was saying, you know, I, I agree. In, in your, in your highlights and your active dividend income, it indicates that all, you know, public doors is always locked. Our doors are open. I'm afraid to go in my building. You understand what I'm saying? They have, I have a video copy of vagrants living on top of the roof landing. I took the video over to the housing management. I had to fight tooth and nail just to speak to them about the vagrants. And then when I, when I called the cops, they come and get the vagrants off the roof landing. But the debris that they leave up there is sinking bags with, a roach ran across my, uh, mind you, I still know, a roach, because I'm a fanatic. When it comes to the pipes and things like that, I had to put it in my own sink. I had to do my own bathroom. But let's get back to the doors. If those doors is open, that's a haven for anybody to come through there. It's a haven. I was so scared to go, when I, I live on the twenty-first floor, I have to check the stairwells constantly because I'm afraid that somebody's going to jump out there on me because I have grandkids, my kids, my moms, you understand what I'm saying? Those doors are open constantly. And mind you, the borough of Manhattan, their doors, they have people working in that unit. And their unit, their doors is locked down. You can't get in there. We, I want the same thing. And like everybody's saying, we want a better quality of life. You understand what I'm saying? And everybody's not, you know, built from the same core. There are people who want better quality of life and we all, yes, we all pay different rents. There are people who want better quality of life, and we all have, we all pay different rent. And those, I'm paying almost $2,000 in rent. And to walk in piss-potted, vagrants living on the rooftop, it's not conducive. It's not conducive at all. And that's all I wanna say. But the way the housing is looking to get us out of there, they're gonna have to pay for my apartment. Trust me. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you, Ms. Coles Reagan. Christina Verdelant, followed by Joshua Barnett, and then Maria Forbes.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for being here, everybody in the audience, and for the officials that are here to hear us better. I know it is kinda spinning to your heads, and you're pretty much used to it. My concern is quality of life, which most people have talked about. But in Clinton era, he had a pilot program to allow people to transit out of housing into owning their own homes. I would like to know if that program is still alive, and if it's not, if you all would consider revitalizing it so that residents who can afford to move out of NYCHA can have a bridge to moving on to having a home of their own. Now, besides all the problem of quality of life that has already been addressed, there's enough blame to go around on both sides of the fence. But the politicians have neglected and abandoned the resident of NYCHA. It's easy to say, take care of where you live and take pride in where you live. But if there is no enforcement, there are residents like myself, and many of them are speaking today, who wants to make change? Who wants to stand up and see things get better? But when you turn, the management hands are tied. There are so many things management is not allowed to do. Every two years, we have managers cycling in and out. There is no support system. And no one knows my name in terms of the politician, but when it's time to be voting, I get phone calls. People calling my home and asking me to support them. And after they're voted into office, there is nothing. You know, that is not okay. I have written a letter to the mayor and to the chairwoman. Of course, that letter came back from the church. You didn't get it in return, so I guess I had the wrong office number for you. But the issues in terms of us getting support, if there is no... If you can sit from here to eternity and hear all the horror story about what happened in NYCHA, and it's really a horror story. But my question and my demand is, where is the support system? We are living in the age of electronics, and we are still being asked to sit on tenant resident and watch, watch what? I mean, watch what you don't wanna see? That's torture. Where is the support? We need support for where we live. So that's what I am here to really talk about, getting the support.
Thank you, Ms. Chrislin. If you have the letter, we'll make sure that we receive it.
I, you know, I wish I knew that I was going to meet the chairlady today. I would have walked with the letter, but I would certainly like to get...
We'll make sure that you have an address if you go in the back that you can send the letter to. Thank you. Joshua Barnett, followed by Maria Forbes, and then Brandon Lowry.
Good evening. My name is Josh Barnett, a one-NYCHA staff for the last eighteen years in the Capital Projects Division. And as an employee, I'm really concerned about what Rad is going to do to already weak staffing levels that we have. We can't forget that many NYCHA residents are also NYCHA employees, and the team's just three thousand, teams are already all leading NYCHA housing. When development goes private, I haven't seen any safeguards or guarantees that there's gonna be resident hiring, that there's gonna be union jobs, there's gonna be civil service jobs. Privatization always comes with strings attached. And we always see a lousy minimum wage maintenance company. What managed, was ostensibly supposed to be public housing, and was, we see that NYCHA already has the outsourcing drive internally, hiring more consultants, hiring more managers, all the standing work, $3.2 billion. All that design work was outsourced to private consultants who really don't have a commitment to NYCHA. And we see more managers being hired. It's really worrisome that we're working with skeleton staff. We've lost twenty-five percent of NYCHA workers since I started, forty percent in my department, but still, we see postings, two weeks ago, they were posting for a managing engineer for $97,000, somebody to watch people working. They're hiring a new vice president in Capital Projects for up to $170,000. That's not the kind of people we need. We need more maintenance staff, we need more groundskeepers, we need more skills trades, we need more architects and engineers that are designing the projects. Mold reanimation is fine. We're the ones who designed the projects to prevent the mold in the first place. But we're running on the ice because we, like I said, we have a skeleton crew, but we see more consultants and more managers. And we're really worried that the Rad program is just gonna throw more oil on the fire of privatization. And we really know, we really know the custom Washington, a real Trump and constant, they wanna obliterate us from the planet. We were demonstrating at Federal Plaza, say, "Hell, no, these are our jobs and our homes, and you can't have them," and that's part of the struggle. But it's really frustrating when we see NYCHA making the worst of a bad situation by spending little money they do have on consultants, on managers, and going down the very slippery slope of privatization to making sure that you have private people managing public land. And again, that comes with strings attached. We need more permanent workers, more union workers, more residents hired, more ready, willing, able to maintain the developments. That sends the message to the orange vampire in the White House that we're here to spread, okay? And I think we're working, there's many, many, many workers who are working for the law. That says you can't have our homes. And that's really what we need to see from the resident and the worker's point of view.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Maria Forbes, Brandon Lowry, and then Axia Torres.
Maria Forbes, Claymont Consolidated, Clay Abington Association. There's seven hundred and fifty residents at the development. It's a rehab that's been open since nineteen ninety-five. But I think that all of y'all sitting up there have no courtesy, professionalism, and respect. I've been here for an hour. You haven't answered any questions. This meeting was pre-called. We got the packet in the mail. This meeting is generally held in June or July to answer the five-year plan, and that's what this meeting is about. But I see everybody that came up here looking to be about a building, a Rad, a dog, some other stuff that y'all don't even care to address. Y'all threw me in a Rad program. I'm so glad I wasn't selected, number one, because I'm gonna follow up on what that gentleman was saying in regards to that private management that you hiring. Those are investors. Those investors is coming for a profit, not for profit. They're coming for a profit. They're not gonna be addressing the residents' situations or solutions. They gonna come here to raise the rents and put the residents out, and they need that. And let me let you know, you have it in that Rad program? You better get an attorney, you better get an engineer, and you better get your residents to get up and go to fight for you. Because I'm telling you, I'm organizing in the Bronx, and that's what I'm gonna do because I'll shut it down before I let you take it away. I just don't understand why y'all reading, writing, writing, reading, texting, and everything else, and not paying attention to these people who took their time to come out here and speak to you in regard to the services that we are losing. I went to Equitable to learn from the United Nations and come back and went to the Black and Puerto Rican Caucus and heard the same thing from two guest speakers, that you know what, it take the city to make the judgment to Washington, D.C. We not doing nothing. If y'all not doing nothing to step up and say, "This is the law." Let me tell you about the law. If a state wanna say you can smoke reefers, then that state makes that law into law go to Washington. It didn't come down from Washington to that state. It came from the state up. So what are you gonna do to take it from the state up to Washington to tell them, "You not firing no more employees. You're gonna continue to do our services. You're gonna answer these residents and keep public housing in the manner in which it was accustomed to and do the services that we need." I wanna hear answers. I'm not walking away from the microphone, Mr. Nup, because I think it's no courtesy, professionalism, respect that no answers was given since I've been in this room to nobody. And I don't wanna speak to Leroy, I don't wanna speak to Yuka, I don't wanna speak to nobody. I wanna show the answer for Mr. K, I wanna the president and gentleman who used to be a resident and now is on the board. Why aren't y'all answering? These people who came out pre-takes, because they don't come for this meeting until June or July. Why don't y'all answer these questions about this private management, the loss of these services, and why these residents are not getting any answers to their questions and the concerns of us losing public housing? Because y'all sure these residents went to Washington and said that they was out there politicking and campaigning. The lady for Steve Love ain't never called me back. And I sit on the citywide resident, the citywide Rad convention with Magna Bar and Enterprise, and told that lady, I said, "If you ready to go to Washington, let's go." Because I'm ready to go out there, because the law come from the city to Washington, not from Washington to the city.
So Ms. Forbes, just...
I wanna hear from this show of her. You can't answer me now.
And I announced at the beginning, this is not an interactive forum.
I was not here for that.
And it's a public hearing for us to hear your comments on a significant amendment, which is why we're having this at this time, because it's a significant amendment. We'll have the annual plan at the early times.
You know what? Just take it here, take the notes. Answer me something in regards to Rad. Yes, we have additional speakers that we need to get to.
We are not able to provide responses at this time to every speaker. We will follow up, and I'm gonna ask that you switch the microphone now, please.
Public housing, what laws, what did the provincial government representative that you have imagine? Where's the president? If you know, you can blow horn. And let me take my blow horn and talk about what I have to say every day with every president, then you take me in my presence. Why is the entrance to the House of Representatives...
We need to, we need to move on. So I'm going to ask that the mic is turned over, and we're gonna ask Brandon Lowry and then Axia Torres to speak, please.
There are forty other, hold on, Jenelle. Maria, there are forty some other people who've gone before you. I'm sorry you weren't here at the beginning to understand the rule. You have been a president for a long time. You understand, you've probably come to this meeting before. You understand the rules, how this meeting works. There is a meeting now. There will be a meeting again when we do the annual plan in January. This is a significant amendment meeting. If you would like, someone can explain that process to you offline, but I'm not going to get into an engagement with you because everyone else has followed the rules. Next person on the list, thank you.
Brandon Lowry, then Ms. Axia Torres.
Those smoking mirrors, that's the fact.
Brandon Lowry is not here? Axia Torres, followed by Ruby Page.
I'm right here. I told him I'm right here. He doesn't have the mic.
Let's go. You ain't got nothing to tell, please. They ain't telling stuff in the face. They done nothing. They just use that name, put it on a tendency, a sentence in Washington, it's saying that. Resident participation. Stop it.
Good evening, Ms. Torres.
Well, that's not in the tendency, because they use that for resident participation.
Ms. Torres, you may begin.
Good evening. I read the annual plan, and so I have like several questions about the engagement of residents and the engagement of resident leaders to understand, like, what exactly is going to happen afterwards. And so I think that there needs to be more communication for the residents to understand exactly what is going to happen. I find it interesting that some people said they didn't get it, some people did, and some people, because I think they feel that it will affect them, whether we're Rad or not, don't understand that we will all be affected because of what's going on with forty-five in the White House. And we need to have better communication with each other so that NYCHA is not a you and us, but a we. And we need to really begin to respect each other and address all these issues that are going on and understand that NYCHA is really under the gun, under this administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. Our final speaker for the evening is Ruby Page.
Thank you. I'm Ruby Page from Twin Parks West Consolidated in the Bronx. Most of the people have said a lot of things that I was gonna speak on anyway, but I'm really concerned at this moment about this Rad situation. We're going into things that's problems in my community. I agree with the people about the Housing Authority, the people that work in the office, they are very rude, okay? They are so rude that it's ridiculous, you know? And I'm a senior citizen, and I older than most of those people in there, and they talk down to you like you're nothing, okay? And I can't respect that. I didn't teach, my kids don't even, they grown and they don't speak to me like that, okay? Now, I also can't even open my windows because of the pigeon poop that's all on the window seals in the building, okay? The garbage containers are underneath the windows. I have a breathing problem. I can't even open my windows for air. My elevators, most of the time, don't even work. We don't have hot water, we don't have no water, most of the time. No hot water, no cold water sometimes, and no water at all. The plastering people, when they're supposed to come, when they're supposed to come to your house for a visit, they tell you they coming, and they don't never show, all right? Now, getting to this, getting to this Rad situation, because our building is also selected, I'm very disturbed about the things that I'm hearing here, and I would like a lot of information so I can go back to my development and explain to these people, because we, like this, if this is smoking mirrors, like this lady said, I need to communicate that to my neighbors, okay? So I need to talk to someone about Rad before I leave because when they start the restoration, I can't even be in an apartment when they doing it. How old people gonna be living in an apartment while they restoring? This is what I'm hearing, okay? I can't, I have a breathing problem. I cannot stay in that apartment when they doing it, you know? So I would like more info, and how long is it gonna take for them to finish this?
Okay, Ms. Page, I have Leroy Williams will speak with you right now about Rad, and then I'm gonna ask someone from Bronx Property Management to speak with you about the development issues. Bronx Property Management, and Mr. Williams is right there in front of you. Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. This concludes the New York City Housing Authority's public hearing on the significant amendment to the fiscal year 2017 annual plan and the draft fiscal year 2017 capital plan. Thank you for your attendance.